If you'll all please rise. Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Denson Freeman of St. James Episcopal Church. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, we thank you for the abundance of your gifts you've bestowed upon the people of this community, for the bounty of the city and the beautiful land on which it resides. We give thanks for the freedom we share and the opportunity to live in a land ruled by the citizens of this country. Tonight, we ask your blessing upon the elected and appointed officials of this fair city and for all those who work and serve in this community. I pray for our councilman and for our mayor that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully and dutifully move through the agenda set before them tonight, and that they may always remember to serve this community with transparency, honesty, and humility, always working to promote the well-being of this city we love and the people for whom they serve. I also pray for the people of this community who are gathered here this evening. May they be filled with your peace and patience, filled with the mindfulness of your call to kindness and hospitality. All these things I pray in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Freeman. Council, you have a couple of resolutions that have been given to us this evening. One of them concerns a reciprocal agreement between the City of Fairhope and the Baldwin County Commission for Exchanging Information on taxing, exchanging tax information. If you would like to vote on that tonight, I wanted to let you know that the current agreement expires on August the 1st, and we do not have a council meeting between now and then in which we should vote on that. So if you'd like to add that, we need to amend the agenda. Also before you is a contract between a vendor and the City of Fairhope for Police Uniforms that also expires prior to the next agenda. That expires on August, next meeting, I'm sorry, expires on August the 10th. So if we, this is a budgeted item as well. If you would like to add these items to the agenda, I see no reason why we should not. I would entertain a motion to amend the agenda to add these two resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of adding these, adding these two resolutions to the agenda. These will be items number 21. The reciprocal agreement will be item 21. And then the uniform bid will be item 22. Okay, I have a motion in a second. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Okay, the agenda is amended. First order of business, our next order of business will be to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting, the work session, agenda meetings which were held on July the 10th. Do you have any additions or deletions or changes to these minutes? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt these minutes.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any final discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Okay, minutes are approved. Mayor Wilson, your report please.
Thank you, Council President. Burrell. Okay, we have two Eagle Scouts in the audience tonight. Both my father and grandfather were in the Boy Scouts. My dad was in Troop 47. I'm sure my sister and I would have been in this troop, which is the oldest continuous Boy Scout troop in the state of Alabama, if we were boys. Eagle Scouts go on to become leaders in our communities, their states, and even our nation. So it is especially important to me that when the youth in our city achieve such high honors, they will be recognized for them here in these chambers. Set. You got them all framed up? There's two more that weren't able to be here, and they're going to be mailed. But I'm pleased to present Bryton Lee Ravenbark and Christian Hayman with these framed certificates of official recognition of their Eagle Scout achievement from a proud city. I take special recognition of the many, many hours of community service given to complete your Eagle Scout project, to achieve the Eagle Scout award, and the outstanding qualities you have shown in the achievement thereof. We recommend your dedication, attention to detail, and hard work, and deem it an honor and a privilege to present you with these certificates of achievements. On behalf of the City of Fairhope, we are pleased to commend you for your fine efforts and extend this token of admiration with which you are regarded in our city. Best wishes in your future endeavors. You are sure to succeed. Congratulations, John.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay. I wanted to, a couple of these things I've announced on social media, but Art Dias is, I've already posted, I'm excited to announce my appointment of Art Dias to the Fairhope Planning Commission Board. Art will be a tremendous amount, he brings a tremendous amount of experience to our city. He is a registered forester and served on the Baldwin County Planning Commission for 16 years. Via our website email, I was asked to discuss the comprehensive plan and where we are with it during the mayor's report. What I can say now is our main focus currently during the moratorium has been utility infrastructure and planning updates. We do not have the money in the budget for fiscal 2017 to do a new comprehensive plan or update what we have. Our work during the moratorium has kept the current comprehensive plan in mind. I did put a proposal for the Restore Act funds to go towards a comprehensive plan and a land use study as it relates to stormwater. And we will hopefully find out about those funds, keeping my fingers crossed, end of this year. Geese. Effective July 27th, which is in a few days, a new ordinance will be in place regarding feeding the geese at our parks and beach. It will be announced on my Facebook page and on the city website. It's a two-prong humane effort to control the explosive population. We have ordered solar-powered laser lights to install at the beach, and this has a 97% success rate, we'll see. And if it works at the beach, we're going to be taking it to the golf course next. I think this is one of the biggest things that's happened in the last two weeks, but Eric Cortinez and Wayne Dias each held public meetings for builders, developers, architects, real estate personnel, and other interested parties. As you may have seen on our Facebook, these were very productive meetings with a wide range of ideas and suggestions that both departments will now take in consideration as they update our ordinances and regulations to present to citizens and council. This was really, really well attended. The vision presentation, as promised, at the State of the City Report will be August 1st. It's at the same location, Centennial Hall at Faulkner. Of course, it's renamed Coastal Alabama Community College at 6:00 PM, and this will be livestreamed. We will talk about strategic priorities necessary to fulfill the citizen-engaged vision and how all of the stakeholders, citizens, businessmen, city employees, have a part to play in making the vision a part of a reality. And then from the supervisors' meetings, this is where all the good stuff happens. We all know about the growth, but census data has come in within the last couple of days, and the latest census puts our population at 19,421 within our city limits. So although there is still some smaller transitional issues with our utility billing system, we are pleased to announce that we are almost back to normal. This is a huge first step in us implementing Munis in all of our departments. This system was purchased over four years ago, and we've had most of the modules, and now we're going to be able to update those in every one of our departments that will increase our efficiency and save a great deal of money for the city. I want to give a special thank you to Carol and Judy, who have been staying late to take calls for utility customers. They usually leave at four, and then the city lines would roll over to police dispatch. Of course, that's not a good thing. We want those lines taken up for emergencies for police and for police work. So that transition is happening, and with all transitions, there are some kinks, but that's been worked out too, and I want to thank them for that. The police department on August 5th at Methodist Church will be celebrating Back-to-School Bookbag Day. This was huge last year. They gave away 500 bookbags with school supplies, and they also donate a lot of crayons, glue sticks, even uniforms. So it's a big day, and if you want to contribute to that and participate, it is August 5th. I've got, I'm only going to give you all the highlights, and I know it sounds like a lot, but there's a lot of good things happening. I also want to thank Lynn, who I've not thanked publicly, but Lynn Mazer is just, has been an incredible resource to our city in helping me with research for the marina, golf course, neighborhood organization, I mean, you name it, and she has been in the background helping. And I so appreciate your excellent communication, working with all of our department heads, because we all need one of you in every department. But just being here, we greatly appreciate it, and that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. Next item is public participation. If you'd like to speak to the council concerning agenda items, number five through 22 only, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. If you have something that's not on the agenda, you will be given an opportunity at the end of tonight's council meeting to come forth and speak to the council. So agenda items five through 22, if you would like to speak to those, please come forward, state your name and address. Okay, I'll close public participation pertaining to agenda items, and just remember, you'll have another opportunity at the end of tonight's meeting. We'll move on to council comments. Councilman Robinson?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Councilman Burrell. I just wanted to recognize again, I talked about this last meeting, the Fairhope Youth Baseball All-Star Teams. And then, so since then, we, our Fairhope National Peanut All-Star Team is going to the World Series in Mississippi, and then our Fairhope American Ozone All-Stars are going to the World Series in Oxford, Alabama. So if you can find a way to support those guys, I know they're doing some more fundraisers. You know, they just raised money to go to state, now they're raising money again to go to the World Series, so they're double-dipping, so they need all the help they can get. So if you see them out selling donuts, car washing, yard sale, and whatever you see, support them in any way you can, and wish them the best. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Robinson. Councilman Conyers?
All right, pretty short and sweet, but I'd like to reiterate what the mayor said about the meeting with Wayne and Eric that they held for the builders and developers. Very well-attended meeting, had a lot of good feedback. I think it's important to, as we look at the moratorium and look at how we want to grow the city, it's important to include the developers and the builders in that process as well, and they had a lot of good suggestions for improving efficiency and just streamlining some of the processes. So I was glad to attend. Well done, guys. Thank you, Wayne and Eric. And lastly, insurance comments during the work session agenda. You know, we're just trying to put our heads together and come up with the best opportunities to save the citizens' money while also maintaining excellent benefits for our employees. And I think we had a lot of good discussion today and look forward to going in some new direction maybe the next two weeks with a tweak to the plan, whether we stay with Regions or go with Cobb's, we may find some improvements for the employees. So that's it.
Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Council President. Two things, we'll let everybody know that we've planned for making repairs of the golf facility, are coming along pretty rapidly, so hopefully we'll have something here shortly on what the plan is to repair. I'm also glad to hear the geese are going gluten-free, and they'll have disco lights down. That's good for them.
Is that it, Councilman Brown? Councilman Boone?
Actually, I'm going to put a little gig, or not a gig, but a promotion for the parking garage. I drove into town Thursday and today, couldn't find a parking spot, drove right to the parking garage, and they're everywhere. I mean, parkings are everywhere. So every time somebody comes up to me and says, "We need to fix the parking," I'm going to ask them where they parked. If they're not in that garage, they don't, I don't want to hear a complaint, because literally it's parking everywhere. And anytime you come to this town and you can't find a parking spot, just head straight to that garage, and even if it's on the top floor, just go to the elevator, punch the button, now you're down on the bottom floor. And it's a, it is an easy walk to the town, anywhere you want to go in this town, and I just don't understand how here there's just no parking in this town, because there is. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to pay for a sticker for Kevin's window that says, "Follow Me to the Parking Garage."
There you go.
I use it a lot myself, Councilman Boone, including today. Well, in keeping with the youth sports theme that Councilman Robinson brought up, I can't believe y'all missed this, you actually left me with something to say, is that our very own Ms. Virginia Green, who's a three-time state girls' golf champion, competed this past weekend in the Junior PGA Golf Tournament in Missouri, and after three days, she was in third place and was 11-under. Okay, guys, council, we couldn't play a scramble and be 11-under after three days. She was 11-under par, which is just phenomenal. And then going into the final day, she didn't have as good a day as she had hoped on the final day. She wound up finishing in 11th in the nation, and she will be competing in the Junior Girls' U.S. Open this weekend in St. Louis. So want to wish her well. She's ranked number nine in the entire world right now, female junior golfer, so somebody to be proud of, and represents Fairhope very, very well when she's out there on the road. So good luck to her. With that, I will close council comments, and we will move to item five on the agenda, which is an ordinance to amend, ordinance number 1586 in the Code of Ordinances to alter the schedule of fees for construction and building permits. Would somebody please introduce this ordinance?
I'll introduce it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cortinez?
Thank you, Mayor Council. This is a request. We have a schedule of fees when we do building permits and for inspection fees, TAP fees, things of that nature. This will relate to building permit fees. Because of the amount of work we've got coming in, there's three items on this that are being amended. We have started using the International Code Council as a third-party plan review, construction and accessibility plan review service. We, our typical fee is $2.50 per thousand of the value of the project for the plan review. I added wording in here that it will be that amount or the cost of the third-party review, whichever is greater, so that we don't run into an instance where our plan review fee per ordinance does not cover the cost. So we added that in there to make sure that we are covering those costs. The second item is a significant increase in the reinspection fees that we charge. Currently, we do not assess reinspection fees, which is basically a punitive fee, until we are having to make a third, fourth, or fifth trip to a site. We come out, we perform an inspection, we will leave a correction list, we come back, we verify those items are done, and then we sign off. We are having increasing numbers of having to make third, fourth, fifth trips for items that were noted originally, because the contractors are not correcting them. Just to let you know, I ran the numbers from January 1st to June 30th. We have performed 5,764 building inspections in the first six months of the year. 31% of those, around 1,800, are reinspections, and close to 1,000 of those are third, fourth, and fifth trips. This puts everybody behind, because we are having to continually reschedule inspections for relatively few contractors who are not taking the time to make sure that they're doing things correctly. So right now, our ordinance states for a fourth trip, it's a $50 inspection, for a fifth trip, it's 75, and for a sixth trip, it's 100. We had contractors who were calling in, charging them over the phone with a credit card and never batting an eye. So we have requested that those be raised to $100 for a fourth trip, $200 for a fifth trip, and $300 for a sixth trip. I had a meeting with the home builders about this. The majority of the home builders are not concerned about this, because this will really only affect the contractors who are not taking the time and doing their job correctly and causing delays for everybody else. To my knowledge, I did not have any real pushback at all, and I've had several conversations with the Home Builders Association about this. The final request that I made, we have had three or four incidents in the last year where we have contractors that are refusing to either call in inspections or they're proceeding without inspections. We've had three foundations poured without an inspection. They call in, but they won't wait for us. And when we ask them about it, they said, "Well, it's just cheaper for me to have my engineer design it and not worry about having to wait for your crew to get out here." When the city signs off on an inspection, we are accepting legal liability for that structure. That's one of the things our inspectors take very seriously. We have already received close to 20 requests for public information this year from attorneys or from home builders where there is some sort of a legal issue with a project. It is critical that they, when we submit and approve their plans, we have to look at it. We have increased our staff. We are down to two days max on an inspection. We can schedule them a day and a half out. But we have no recourse for someone who is just choosing to ignore the rules. The maximum fine that we can charge under a municipal, municipality is $500. I would like to institute the ability to do that for someone who is purposely skating the rules and not doing what they are legally required to do. In the end, we would, we are the ones who accept the ultimate liability when those things happen, and it is not in the interest of the city or our citizens or the future residents of these buildings to allow that kind of thing to happen and nothing be done about it.
Any questions for Mr. Cortinez? Thank you, Eric. Council, we can let this lay over to let the public have a chance to look this over and vote on it at the next meeting unless you think that we're not going to get any feedback, in which case you have the option of suspending with the rules and voting on I don't hear a motion to suspend with the rules. We will take this up at our next council meeting for a vote. Thank you. Okay, item number six is a resolution to award a bid for disaster debris removal and disposal for 2017. Who is going to speak to this? Mr. Ames?
We brought it to you last time, at your last council meeting, and you tabled it to this time to take a look at it. So disaster debris removal bid, it was put out, evaluated, recommendation put for you.
You should have this tabulation that was in your binder. Is it also listed there on line as well? Anybody have any questions for Dan?
I'd ask if they're located in Auburn.
Correct.
So this would be debris removal for Hurricane. I'm just wondering what issues they would have mobilizing and getting down here. Do they have lots of other municipalities that they service?
They do. They have a number of contracts in place listed in their bid response, their total package. And of course, most of them are coastal. Some of them are not because of possible tornado activity. We did pose that question to them, and they said that they had a three-plus-hour response time. I would assume that they would stage items much closer, equipment much closer, in response to an event, and not be so far away. Others, bidders were from Texas and other locales, so at least they're in the state of Alabama.
Dan, I'm trying to find that number. You know where it's at.
Yes, sir.
The final number that the recommendation came from?
The recommendation is based on taking Hurricane Ivan as the standard.
The final number, just where's that, where's that number?
The, and we compare those, and it's down at the bottom of each column, the bottom number in the column, the...
Find it.
Hold on. Get to it.
Can you see it?
Hold on. Here we go. It was... There you go. Comparison number on the final page, just above the recommendation signatures.
Oh, there it is. Double-sided got me.
Okay, yes, sir.
There it is. Okay, yep, there it is.
Okay, now that is five categories of different removals, stumps, and different categories that we used information from Ivan, Hurricane Ivan, actual, real data instead of a guess, so that we could compare them, have some standard to compare. It's a contract's put in place with not an immediate need. Hopefully, we won't need it. So hopefully, it'll be a zero-cost contract. But I do want you to understand that those numbers reflect those five items, not the total cost of the events. Okay?
Now, any questions for Dan? Okay, so they are recommending the award go to D&amp;J Enterprises. They were the lowest bidder on the sheet at a total, let me pull that back up again, 1.8 million.
For the five categories, yes, sir.
For the five categories. Here are some small print. Hearing no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to award the bid to D&amp;J.
I can't read the tab sheet.
Okay, I'll read it. Would you like for me to read them out to you? Okay, so D&amp;J, 1.7998 million, call it 1.8 million. DRC, Emergency Services, 2.695 million. Crowder Golf, 1.966 million. TFR Enterprises...
TFR Enterprises, 1.961 million. CERES, Environmental Services, 2.031 million.
I'm sorry. What was the low bid?
It was the D&amp;J, the one they're recommending at 1.799.
I'll move we pass it. We have to have it for female purpose.
Okay. I have a motion to award the bid to D&amp;J. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Just for final discussion, I want to say a few things, is that this was brought to us at the last meeting, and I didn't want to walk on a, although I think it was obvious who we were going to select, I didn't want to walk on a $1.8 million contract without the public and when it was on the agenda. So, we took a chance that we wouldn't have a hurricane in two weeks, and since there was nothing out in the Atlantic or Gulf, I think we were, you know, taking a calculated chance that we wouldn't have a disaster. Anyway, I'm going to make some more comments on this after we have a vote on that. But does anybody else have any comments? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor of awarding the contract, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Contract is awarded. Thank you. Counsel, what I would like to say is that I am not happy that we were not told that we had one year left on the current contract. Now, it may be water under the bridge. We may never spend a dime. I hope we don't spend a dime on this contract. But the current contract that we had with Pittman Tractor, and you can say what you want about people awarding it to our state senator, but he's had that for years, and it's legal, and anybody that wants to make a stink about that is, you know, incorrect. It's not on us to determine, and the Ethics Commission has determined it was legal. But he chose not to bid this because he knew that we could extend his contract another year. So, he did not bid on this, which is fine. That's his right, and so that contract expired two weeks ago. What bothers me is that the extension that we had was, if you take those five categories, was $115,000 less for an Ivan-like storm than what we just awarded. And it really bothers me that this was not brought to the council's attention, that we had another year. And so, I don't really know why we put it back out for bid when all we had to simply do was extend the current contract for another year. Said my piece on it, and keep our fingers crossed, but, you know, every $115,000 or, you know, if you have double a Ivan, you know, 230,000, every nickel we save is, you know, a nickel earned in this city.
I'd like to speak to that. I did ask Dan to rebid this in January, which all companies that are on our bid list would get this, including Pittman. And in May of last year, when he wanted to, or when that company wanted to come to Fair Hope and exercise the first extension, it was in May. But this wasn't advertised until the 11th hour. In fact, it was looked at and walked on the day before it was expired. So, you know, the process was a problem, but rebidding these things, I think, is a good opportunity. I'm a new administration, and I want to give everybody opportunity. I've talked to Tripp, and he chose not to bid, but he didn't send a letter to negotiate the extension either. And I think he's just, you know, going through a lot right now with this campaign, and that's great. But I did talk to him. Regardless, if I'm going to ask for something to be rebid because I want fresh eyes and new opportunity for all, because I'm a new mayor, there's nothing wrong with that. And we've had plenty of time to do it, because I asked for these things to be done in January. So, the savings is a hypothetical.
It is.
And, you know, would we have an exact storm like Ivan? And those things in the original contract do not take into account inflation and other... But the categories that we measure are not necessarily the categories that you can measure to get a true figure of comparisons. That's what I learned when I talked to Volker. So, I do think, and we'll talk about it later, that we should get Volker involved so we can have a presentation of the proposals. It's not just about the lowest bid. It's about, you know, a lot of different things. And again, this is all hypothetical. There's not a true savings here unless something happens.
I acknowledge that, Mayor. Right. I acknowledged that twice. I think the reason you did it, because you've gone on so long now, I'm going to tell you what I think. You did it because you wanted Pittman Tractor Company out. That's why you did it. We all know why you did it. You wanted them out, and now you're going to hire Volker to look at it. When we've been through this process so many times, we know what we're doing on this. Our staff knows what they're doing. We didn't need an attorney to look at this. We were going to award this bid because, no, Pittman did not. You know, he did this two years ago. He bid against himself and came back higher, so we just extended it. So, of course, he wasn't going to bid. And you're right. Granted, hopefully, this never comes to pass, but if it does come to pass, once again, it's cost the City of Fairhope money, if it does, for no good reason at all.
I think that you are out of line. And you don't say that's not enough. There's a lot more that goes into this, and I spent a lot of unnecessary time...
You did.
Doing this because it came in so late. That's the problem.
You did spend some unnecessary time, that's for certain.
And I'm doing this for the city, okay? Having these options for the city is important. And it's not because I didn't want Pittman to have the contract. Everybody has a fair chance to rebid when I request a rebid. What was going to happen is that we were going to give...
Item number seven on the agenda. We're going to move on to item number seven.
I'll talk more about this with the constituents later, but this was the right decision.
That's $115,000 additional, the only way you can measure it. Item number seven is a resolution. The City Council approves the selection of Neil Schaefer to perform design engineering services for new sidewalks to Manly Road Soccer Complex, related to RFQ number PS005-17, ALDOT TAP grant number TA16930, and hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to negotiate a fee schedule and establish not to exceed limit with this firm.
It pretty much speaks for itself. We have a TAP grant to do the sidewalks, and it speaks for itself. We're asking you to approve Neil Schaefer to, the mayor, to negotiate a fee schedule with Neil Schaefer to be the engineer of record on this. They are acceptable to ALDOT.
Very good. Okay. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to select Neil Schaefer as the engineer of record for the sidewalk to the Manly Road Soccer Complex.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Seven is the design engineering services for new sidewalks, and eight, construction engineering inspection service for new sidewalks.
Great question.
Correct, sir. The CNI is going to be funded by ALDOT, and the fee is, pretty much, is established off of the construction cost. And the design is on us, so we have to negotiate that fee. And it will be negotiated if you... Well, it is now. You approved that one, so it will be negotiated.
So, one thing missing in that, Mr. Ames, is that it says sidewalks to the Manly Road Soccer Complex. In item eight, it talks about sidewalks on Manly Road and also on County Road 44. Is that applicable to both?
It is the same awarded TAP grant. It's TAP grant. This one is number 930. See the parenthetical expression at the top, 930. And this is, we have three of these in the works right now, so this is one of the three.
It's a little confusing there. Seven has no cost. Eight has a cost associated with it.
Well, one is to approve the execution of the contract because that is the one that ALDOT has set up, and they have already established the fee for. The other one is on us. The design is on us, and it's a two-step process. We have to come to you and approve the fee schedule and...
We're in the first step of one and the second step of the other?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Okay. Where are we, Clark? Do we have a motion and a second?
You have a motion and a second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the selection of Neil Schaefer. Any further discussion or questions? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Selection is approved. Thank you, counsel. Item number eight is a resolution that the City Council approves the selection of Neil Schaefer to perform construction engineering and inspection services for new sidewalks to Manly Road Soccer Complex, ALDOT TAP grant number TAA-TA16930, with a cost not to exceed $65,218, and authorize Mayor Wilson to execute the contract. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anybody need Mr. Ames to describe that? Okay. Any further questions? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the selection to perform the CNI services, giving that to Neil Schaefer, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Selection is approved. Item number nine is a resolution. The City of Fairhope enters into an agreement with the state of Alabama acting by and through the Alabama Department of Transportation relating to a, excuse me, transportation alternatives program with partial funding by the Federal Highway Administration, which agreement is before the council for the sidewalks between U.S. Highway 98 and Baldwin County Road 13. I'll entertain a motion to enter into this agreement.
So moved.
We'll want you second.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Ames?
This is one of the other ones. Same kind of deal. It's a TAP grant. We won the TAP grant. And this is the first step to enter into the agreement, and then we'll be going after the engineers after that.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Ames? Will we get to see a, I was looking, will we get to see a map of exactly where these are?
We can.
Okay. I didn't see anything in our package on that. I'd like to see a map on that. There was some discussion among the council quite some time ago about this TAP grant, and I believe that we had kind of changed. We wanted to put some more emphasis on Highway 44.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure that that's implemented.
This is between 98 and 13, correct. Yes, sir. I don't have a map in front of me, but I can, I can...
All right.
Not for this award, but we can, in future tense, we can try to provide you one with every package.
Can we get a sketch of that in our box or something, Mr. Ames?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Excellent.
Part of the reason of that is we don't have an engineer of record yet on the work, but ALDOT will have some preliminaries that we submitted with the application.
Okay. Excellent. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Ames, counsel? Any questions? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor of entering into this agreement with the state of Alabama, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Resolution passes. Thank you, counsel. Item number 10 is a resolution. It's the City of Fairhope vote to purchase windscreen benches and awnings for the rec department. The items are available for purchase as quotes were obtained. The cost will be $14,887.82. If you're wondering, the budget was 13.1, so pretty close. Somebody like to entertain a motion to purchase these items?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to purchase these items for the rec department. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Item number 11 is a resolution. The City of Fairhope votes to purchase one Altech Model DH48B Derrick truck for the electric department. The equipment is available for direct procurement through the National Joint Powers Alliance Buying Group contract, therefore, does not have to be let out for bid. The bid has been nationally bid, this has been nationally bid through the NJPA's bid process with a total cost of $235,926. Somebody like to entertain a motion for this purchase?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I will tell you, counsel, that it's about $36,000 over budget. I think that there were, the explanation I was giving, where there were a couple of things that they didn't consider when they were putting that in the budget, some, maybe some winches that go on the front and after the vehicle.
Yes, sir. They were looking at a leased vehicle that didn't contain those things. We shifted over to a procurement, and the department realized that it was to the advantage of the city to have those items on there that they also have on their existing truck.
Right. I don't think we always want to use the excuse that we've saved money on buying several other items this year, but we have, so I think we're in good shape financially. We have a motion and a second, Clark.
Motion and a second.
I lose track sometimes. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any final discussion or any questions? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor of the purchase, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Item 12 is a resolution. The City of Fairhope vote to purchase two chassis and rear loader bodies for the Public Works Department, which will be sanitation, and the equipment is available for direct procurement through the National Joint Powers Alliance Buying Group contract, therefore, does not have to be let out for bid. This has been nationally bid through the NJPA's bid process with a total cost of $302,079.10. Councilman Brown, I thought you gave me that budget in amount.
$6,000 under.
$6,000 under budget. Very good. Okay. Entertain a motion for this purchase?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for the purchase. Any questions? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Purchase is approved. Item 13 is a resolution. The City of Fairhope votes to purchase a mud mixer for a boring machine for the gas, water, and electric departments. The equipment is available through direct procurement through the National Joint Powers Alliance Buying Group, therefore, does not have to be let out for bid. This has already been nationally bid through their process. The total cost is $35,891.16. Where are we at, Councilman Brown?
$9,000 under.
All right. Under budget. Very good. I'll entertain a motion for this purchase?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for this purchase. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor of the purchase, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Item 14 is a resolution. The City of Fairhope votes to purchase a vacuum system for the boring rig for the gas, water, and electric departments. The equipment is available for direct procurement through the National Joint Powers Alliance Buying Group contract, therefore, does not have to be let out for bid. This has already been nationally bid through their process. The total cost is $35,125.56.
$9,000 under.
Entertain a motion for this purchase?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for the purchase. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Purchase is approved. Item 15 is a resolution. The City of Fairhope vote to purchase additional play equipment for the rec department at Valana Park. The equipment is available for direct procurement through the U.S. Communities Buying Group contract, therefore, does not have to be let out for bid. This has been nationally bid through the NJPA's bid process. Actually, I don't think that should be NJPA's bid process. That should be the U.S. Communities Buying Group bid process with a total cost of $13,840.93.
$4,000 over.
About $4,000 over budget. Any discussion? All right. And I'll entertain a motion to award the bid.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All right. Now, any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor of the purchase, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Purchase is approved. Thank you, counsel. Item 16 is a resolution. The City of Fairhope vote to purchase one 2017 Ford F-250 Crew Cab, three-quarter-ton pickup truck for the Public Works Department, and the vehicle is available for direct procurement through the Alabama State Purchasing Contract, therefore, does not have to be let out for bid. The total cost is $27,427.
$10,000 under.
Entertain a motion to purchase this vehicle.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Tell you what, these people are doing a good job with their budgeting. They know how to inflate the number and make us feel good. They know how to inflate the number and make us feel good. Or maybe we're buying the vehicle in the late, late in the model year, so we're getting a discount, so. All right. Hearing no other discussion, all those in favor of the purchase of the pickup, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, purchase is approved. Item 17 is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson has authorized to execute change order number one to the project number TAPA TA 14919 US 98 in Alabama 104 multi-use path in the amount of $44,383.70 and awarded a change order to Arrington Curb and Excavation and authorized Mayor Wilson to execute change order number one. Mr. Ames, could you speak to this?
If I have Andy James involved.
Oh, is he there? Okay, sure.
He can speak to the technical part.
Okay, very good.
I want to start out by apologizing. I was before the council back in February, and at the time, the hope was that we could negotiate with the contractor to get this at no additional cost. And unfortunately, in going back and forth with the contractor for the past few months, this was about the best we could do. I did bring some information on the aluminum bridge that's currently being proposed as part of the change order, and I brought some photographs of a like bridge. It's not the exact bridge that's being proposed, but it's very similar. This goes back to the earlier request. The original plan was to put in a timber boardwalk with approximately eight-inch diameter timber piles, eight foot on center across Fly Creek. And so we were going to put somewhere on the order of magnitude of 30 to 40 piles across Fly Creek. In reviewing this with the contractor, apprehensions about hitting utilities, apprehensions about potentially blocking the box culvert that goes under Highway 98, the contractor requested that they be allowed to submit this change order request earlier on as a value engineering, and it ultimately has come back as a change order request and not a value engineering. We've reviewed the pricing relative to other similar bridges, and that's why we recommended the change order to the council.
Any questions for Mr. James? So this has been discussed in previous meetings. Do you like the fact that we're going to go with the aluminum bridge? I mean, I don't like the pylons in the creek, but...
From a maintenance standpoint, with the timber bridge, I mean, you're an order of magnitude 15 to 20 years if the treatment holds out on the pressure-treated wood. With the aluminum, shouldn't be any salt spray, so the aluminum should hold out for a much longer period of time if you were maintenance period, and it should provide a consistent look across the entire project.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, counsel, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the change order.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to execute the change order. Any further discussion? It looks like it only resulted in a $23,000 increase in the total project cost and not the $44,000 that we're approving now.
That's, that's correct. The project anticipated to underrun a little bit from the overall project budget, but when we request a change order, we have to factor in what the potential total cost is.
Right. Okay, very good. Okay, counsel, any other questions or comments before I call for the vote? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of this change order, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you, counsel. Item number 18 is a resolution that City of Fairhope vote to purchase upgrades to the city's enterprise resource planning software and to add applicant tracking system from Tyler Technologies for the Human Resources Department. The cost for the first year is $5,805 and a $495 recurring annual fee. Who's going to speak to this item? Do you want to come up?
Knew I should have worn heels today. As you know, we have the MUNA software system that we use throughout the city, and with that, there's a module that goes with that for the HR department that has to deal with selection, accepting applications, screening them, sending rejections. This would be so beneficial for us. It would actually cut the work of another half person. It would be, it would expedite the application process. It would look more professional instead of right now, we have where you have to go to our website, print out an application, write on it, and turn it in. It's been, personally, I can say the last time I've done that was at least 10 years ago. It would allow us to view the applications. It would allow us to send that on to the hiring managers. The hiring managers can look at it, send it back to us. What we could do is we could have, if you say like 25 people apply for a position, we can look at all 25 people, and at the same time, at the, you know, blink of an eye, we can send them a rejection letter all at the same time with one keystroke. That cuts down so much time. Applications don't get lost. It's more professional. It's, it's really beneficial for all of us.
I think retaining the information is important, too. If we have the same experience and a job opening, it can reach these people without advertising. And you're going to advertise it anyway, but it will reach these people.
We would be able to have what's called job interest cards, which are very, very neat. People would be able to go onto our site and say that they want to know when positions are available, and then automatically, when we post a job, they will, since they've signed up for it, they will get notice of that. We'll be able to get more, we'll be able to reach a bigger audience. We'll have a better pool of applicants. We'll be able to hire the right people for the right positions. It's, there's nothing bad you can say about it.
Okay.
And this is a great price for it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, before I ask for a motion, this is a small expense compared to many items on here, if not, you know, most items, if all but maybe one or two in these last two items. And, you know, because this wasn't budgeted, I had planned on scrutinizing this one because I didn't know of it, but I like your explanation. I like what you said. Makes sense. I'm going to vote in favor of it, and I really didn't know how I was going to vote until you gave that explanation. So, counsel, I'll entertain a motion to purchase this software.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to purchase the software. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, purchase is approved. Thank you, counsel. Item number 19 is a resolution that City of Fairhope approves the request of the Fairhope Airport Authority who voted to request the Public Works Department to use the city's street sweeper and operator to help maintain the aprons and taxiways south of the North Hangar at HL Sunny Callahan Airport on a quarterly basis. I can speak to this since I'm on the Airport Authority. Also have Joe McInerney, the chairman here. At the last Airport Authority meeting, which was held last week, the Airport Authority voted to request the city do this. Otherwise, they have to rent a street sweeper, and this is not something that's a big expense. It would probably take a street sweeper maybe an hour, an hour and a half. This is not the runways. It's only the aprons and the taxiways. And, you know, there'd be a little bit of time, you know, commute time, 20 minutes or so for it to drive the back roads to get to the airport, but we felt it, you know, a need that we have out there, and it could save the Airport Authority some money, and in partnership with the city, we thought that that would be a good thing to do. I had one question from Councilman Robinson as to the liability of the city, and Chairman McInerney contacted our insurance agent today, who, this morning, whom said that the insurance company for the City of Fairhope would cover this on that property. I mean, we do have a fire station there, and there has been other things that city employees have done there over the many years. And I asked also City Attorney, Mr. Nguyen here on my left, if that's something he thought that we could do, and the city's insurance would cover it, and he was in agreement with Mr. Robinson's, Robbie Robinson's statements. So if that, I hope that answers your question, Councilman Robinson, but just due to the sensitivity of this, we will welcome any other comments or discussion. I will entertain a motion to pass this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the Fairhope Airport Authority to use the street sweeper four times a year. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, request is granted. Thank you, counsel. Item number 20 from the Fairhope Police Department is a request to use barricades, tents, garden hose, hydrant splitter for water slides, fold-out chairs, extension cords, and a generator, and trash cans and liners for the back of school in at the Fairhope United Methodist Church on Saturday, August the 5th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. I guess, Clark and Mr. City Attorney, I have one question. There's three members of this church on the council. Are we voting a benefit for our church, and should we recuse ourselves from this? And then can you vote with only two members remaining?
It's, I don't think you can vote with two members remaining, but I think this is not a personal benefit to you or your families. It's a benefit to a church. The fact that you attend, I don't think it conflicts you out in this decision.
Okay. All right, counsel. With that, I'll entertain a motion to grant the request.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to grant the request.
From the Baptist?
Yes, sir.
I'd say from the Baptist.
All right. Well, you guys are invited, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
All right. So we have a motion and a second to grant the request. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, the grant, the request is granted. Thank you, counsel. Item, I'm sorry, item 21, which was added to the agenda, is the resolution for the reciprocal agreement, and I'll just read this. It says, whereby, be it resolved, the governing body of the City of Fairhope, that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a reciprocal agreement between the City of Fairhope and the Baldwin County Commission for exchanging information related to tax returns and our tax information. This agreement will be for a period of three years and automatically renew annually thereafter. Those are city's tax returns, right? Just the city's tax information, property tax information, just numbers, gross numbers. Is that right, Mr. Ames? Is that right? Ms. Clark?
It's all tax information going back and forth between their revenue department and our revenue department.
This is nothing new. We've been doing this for...
We've been doing it forever.
For a long time, right, okay. And this expires, I believe, August the 1st, so we need to get that on the agenda. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the reciprocal agreement.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you, counsel. Item 22 was added. I'll read this. Be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Fairhope, Alabama, that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute extension number one of the contract with Sunbelt Fire for the Police Department Investigations and Corrections Uniforms Bid Number O28-16 for an additional one year, as per the terms and conditions, including pricing of the original contract and to be ordered as needed with available budgeted funds. Entertain a motion to award this bid?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to award the bid. Any final discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Last item on tonight's agenda is public participation. If you have anything else to bring forth before the council, please come to the podium. State your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Wendy Solomon, 123 Sandy Ford Road. Thank you all for the geese situation. Lynn, thanks for bringing that to the attention. I've noticed online that there are some videos of alligators in the duck pond, and that is very concerning. I'm not sure if that's true, but that concerns me. You know, there are a lot of young kids that walk around that duck pond, and I would hate for something to happen in that area. So anyhow, that's what I wanted to bring before you, that if there, you know, maybe Robert knows a crocodile Dundee or something to go take care of those, but that's really concerning that I saw those alligators in the duck pond.
Sure. Mayor, is that, I mean, can you confirm that?
I didn't know about that.
Okay, can anybody on the staff confirm it?
Okay.
There was a small one.
Yeah.
We were talking about the small alligator that was in the little small pond across the woods. It's been removed.
Okay, it's gone?
Yeah, it was in the wild last year.
Okay.
Thank you.
It was a three and a half foot monster.
Doing a poor job on those geese, is all I can tell you.
I didn't have anything to do with it.
Okay, that was concerning, so that's great. My next question is, is do you all have a rotation with the bringing up of the airport and then getting the street city sweeper? Is there a rotation in neighborhoods that, that sweeper goes through?
I would ask the Streets Department if there's anyone left here that could answer that question. I'm sure that they have a schedule, but I couldn't tell you what it is. Is there anybody here from Public Works that can answer that? How about we task the mayor with getting back to you on that schedule? Could you provide her with that schedule?
Yeah, that'd be great, just for even our neighborhood associations to know when they're coming by, just like recycling. People can get their cars off the street or remove anything for them to clean the area.
Right, yeah, it's a good question.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Not see anyone, I will close public participation, and I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.[1793.32]